Item number 10, Conduct of Business 10A. Receive an oral report on the city's initiatives and activities related to the California Public Utilities Commission, CPUC, investigation of the 2010 PG&E gas pipeline explosion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We will be following along with a PowerPoint for which we also have hard copies available if anybody is interested. I'll do the first part of the presentation and then turn it over for some comments by the City Attorney as we go along. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give the City Council and the community, and we hope that there are numbers of people watching at home, an update and a report on the now four-and-a-half-years-long process of advocacy and action that the city has undertaken in the wake of the devastating September 2010 pipeline explosion in our town. I want to, first of all, acknowledge the leadership provided by this City Council. This picture in the PowerPoint shows you at the first anniversary commemoration on September 9, 2011. We had, even then, virtually no idea what this city would be challenged with in producing a full recovery for this community in the wake of that devastation. Then and immediately after the explosion in 2010, City Council vowed to do everything within its power to rebuild expeditiously the neighborhood that was destroyed and to restore the community, and importantly, to support recovery of the victims and of the community that had been traumatized. Much of that work is actually still, I'm sort of sorry to report, still in progress. But the city has achieved some very, very significant accomplishments, and we wanted to eliminate some of those tonight. Before we go on to the real meat of this presentation, I wanted to note that this part of our story really begins in late 2011, early 2012, and focuses largely on the city's participation in the proceedings before the California Public Utilities Commission. Prior to that, the city achieved a couple of very, very significant accomplishments that are not the subject of this presentation tonight but deserve repeating. The first is the establishment of a $50 million trust fund in discussion with PG&E in order that the city had the funds and could thereby pursue all of the necessary actions surrounding rebuilding, restoring this community. Subsequent to that, at the city's initiative, the city negotiated a restitution fund, again, with PG&E in order to provide the opportunity for this community, as part of its healing, as part of its recovery, to do some good, to provide some benefit in the long term to this community in order to address the serious trauma and the lasting effects of the devastation that occurred here in 2010. Purpose, again, of the presentation tonight is to give you and members of the public specifically a report on what is going on, why is it important, and most critically, why does the city of San Bruno remain fully engaged in continuing to press its agenda even after, well after, financial restitution has been secured and funds to rebuild the physical devastation have been secured and are in progress? What you see on the slide before you is the reason. Eight residents of our community died, a neighborhood was destroyed, and an entire community continues to experience the trauma of knowing that what happened here actually could happen again. That was confirmed by the NTSB in the first year after the explosion. The NTSB, as you know, conducted an exhaustive, year-long investigation that determined the multiple causes of the disaster, and most importantly, that investigation revealed that this disaster was not an accident. It was not a tragic accident that could not have been predicted or prevented. In fact, what caused the explosion was multiple deficiencies, largely on the part of Pacific Gas and Electric Company, as well as on the part of the CPUC, which organization failed to effectively and rigorously regulate. This slide identifies the specific findings of the NTSB, and the last three bullet points under the heading of CPUC having to do with violation of California transparency laws, rules of practice, and the initiation of state and federal investigations obviously occurred following, but directly on the basis of the information that was initially developed by the NTSB. In the wake of the NTSB investigation, its conclusions, its findings, and its recommendations, the city identified five specific objectives that would guide its work and would attempt to right the wrong, to set the stage so that the people of San Bruno and of California need not worry whether something like what happened here might possibly happen again. Those five objectives have continued to guide the city's effort and to focus its work effort out of all of the avenues that we could track down. First, investigate the cause of the explosion. As I mentioned, that's been completed by the NTSB but remains in the latter stages of progress through the CPUC. Correct and remediate negligent practices and conduct. And as we go forward in our presentation tonight, you'll see that that remains very much an open issue with new discoveries being made virtually on a daily basis, even now, four-and-a-half years later. Penalize appropriately. And again, I would just mention that this includes not only the compensation and the restitution that the city has received, but more specifically addresses the actual fines and penalties that will be assessed through the CPUC against PG&E, not only as a punishment, if you will, but as a marker for utility companies, not only in California but across the nation, to identify that poor behavior, poor management of system assets can result in devastating financial consequence. And I would pause here to just note for a moment that, under California law, fines and penalties do not affect rates, so shareholders will be responsible for those costs that are directly attributable to fines and penalties. Those costs will not result in increased rates for customers of the utility system. Importantly, ensuring safety improvements, it remains a guidepost in the city's work effort and taking efforts that we can, in conjunction with others, to reform the regulatory system. And that, in large measure, is part and parcel of what our conversation with you tonight is about. Specifically, we want to report on the city's progress against each of those objectives. As I mentioned, we've achieved some results, and we could check off those items as completed. However, the preventable tragedy that was caused by gross negligence, faulty record-keeping, and negligent oversight, both by PG&E and by the CPUC, remains an issue of concern and Second, the city vowed to correct and remediate negligent practices. The CPUC has found over 3,000 separate violations of law occurring over a period extending back over 50 years. Seventy corrective actions have been identified as needed, and a proposed $1.4 billion penalty and fine is pending for decision before the California Public Utilities Commission. The CPUC has additionally ordered $2.2 billion in pipeline safety improvements to assure that the system is capable and can be operated in a safe and effective manner. And as this process has unfolded, this slide shows one example of the additional issues that have been raised, that have been identified, and have been adjudicated through the California Public Utilities Commission, resulting in fines and penalties. As to the city's objective related to penalizing appropriately, the fines and penalties that are proposed to be assessed against PG&E represent a historic level. Actually, prior to the explosion here in San Bruno and the proceedings in which San Bruno has engaged, there have been a really very minimal amount of fines and penalties assessed, and in fact, as we have continued participation in these proceedings, we have actually, I think we can take pride in the fact that the CPUC recognizes and has begun to step up to evaluate and penalize appropriately. Again, this penalty includes not only monetary sanctions but corrective measures, and the city continues to call for full and complete completion of the NTSB recommendations. Ensuring system safety improvements, an important aspect of our advocacy, has included recognizing not only the corrections that are needed in PG&E's operational practices and safety procedures, but that the utility systems throughout our state operated by others need similar attention and have been subject to the same level of deficient regulatory oversight. The city of San Bruno importantly continues to push for two improvements that address directly the needs and the objectives that we outlined several years ago but are not yet assured. Those are the establishment of an independent monitor at the California Public Utilities Commission to assure oversight of the commission's activities and its regulatory procedures in order to establish and assure that a culture of safety takes hold and begins to frame and shape all of the decisions and the activities that the CPUC is responsible for. Again, that is not yet the case. A Pipeline Safety Trust, the city of San Bruno has continued and will continue to advocate for funding to establish an independent body modeled after that that was established out of Bellingham, Washington, in the wake of a similarly devastating tragedy that occurred in 1998. That Pipeline Safety Trust, known as the National Pipeline Safety Trust, has been a vigorous advocate for pipeline safety, for legislative initiative, and for regulatory reform across our nation. Their work is important. It is a very small organization, and although it's had a mighty impact, its work needs particular focus in California if we are to fully accomplish the objectives that our experience put in front of us. I'm going to turn the presentation over now to the City Attorney, who's going to talk about some of the very specific issues related to reform of a broken system, which continues to be current on our radar screen and far from what we could say is fixed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, what you see on your screen is the lawsuit that you authorized the city to file against the Public Utilities Commission for the disclosure of public records. And as you know, that lawsuit came only after multiple and lengthy attempts were made by the city to get the Public Utilities Commission to comply with state law regarding the disclosure of public records. Ultimately, as you also know and authorize, the case was settled. It was resolved. The settlement's a matter of public record, and as a result of that settlement, about 7,000 emails were disclosed by the PUC. Those emails showed about 40 instances, that's four-zero, instances of what the city felt were improper ex-party communications. And just to explain for the benefit of the public, an improper ex-party communication is one in which executive-level members of the Public Utilities Commission were having conversations, undisclosed conversations, with the same level or similar level members of Pacific Gas and Electric Company about certain kinds of pending proceedings. And the PUC has rules that both regulates and prohibits some of those communications. As part of the settlement that the city agreed to, the PUC did agree to initiate reform of their Public Records Act procedures, and they have also agreed, which they've already started, and they also agreed to revamp their website to make it more user-friendly for members of the public who might wish to make a Public Records Act request. However, what we didn't realize is that that case was going to be a catalyst for some more alarming discoveries. PG&E did conduct their own internal investigation, apparently, and disclosed to the media that they had reviewed 65,000 emails. They disclosed some of those emails to the media, and when asked for the rest of those emails by the city of San Bruno, they indicated they would not provide those. However, as you can see, those emails supported the NTSB's conclusion, and I guess at that time we could say it was almost an assumption because they didn't have a lot of evidence to support it, but it certainly supported their conclusion that the relationship between the regulator and the regulated entity was far too close for comfort. The emails that you see on the screen demonstrate an inappropriate familiarity that you might see between colleagues or between friends and not between an entity that is supposed to regulate a public utility responsible for the distribution of gas and electric power throughout the state of California. In any event, when the city requested that PG&E provide those, apparently 65,000 emails to the city, PG&E refused, and the city had to go to the administrative law judge to request that those emails be produced directly to the city. And ultimately, they were ordered to be produced. And some of those examples that you see on the screen right now are emails that I think are best described as alarming in terms of their content. The very first one is something that's an example of the parties discussing how they're going to violate the ex-party rules, which they otherwise tell everybody that they either follow or don't know enough whether to follow or not. So this is an example of something in which the city believes should not be occurring. You shouldn't have parties trying to figure out how to violate the rules. And then the second email on there, I think, is just shortly after the explosion, and I think it speaks for itself. Let me pause for just a minute and ask the question, what did the city learn from its Public Records Act case and the settlement and the subsequent fallout? I think we've really learned one major thing, and that is that the Public Utilities Commission is not accountable to the public, your constituents. And there's three main reasons for that. The first reason, I should say, all of those reasons are grounded in state statute, in state law passed by the legislature. So the first reason they're not accountable to your constituents is that state law says that all information that flows from a public utility to the Public Utilities Commission is confidential. There is a presumption of confidentiality for all information, and that is one of the bases that the Public Utilities Commission used to deny our requests for information. They said, "Look at state law. It says it's confidential. We can't possibly produce it because then we'd be violating state law." Well, that is the opposite of the presumption for all local agencies, the city of San Bruno and every other state agency, where information that is sent from somebody to the city is presumed not to be confidential. It is presumed to be a matter of public record unless shown otherwise. So that's the first state law that results in the lack of transparency. The second state law says that members of the public, your constituents, while they can sue the city in Superior Court, and incidentally, you had a member of the public coming up tonight saying that she may be interested in doing that, while those individuals can sue you in Superior Court, they can't sue the Public Utilities Commission in Superior Court. They can only sue the Public Utilities Commission about important matters in the appellate court or the Supreme Court of California. That makes, in the city's view, public accountability virtually impossible to enforce because no member of the public is going to go to the appellate court or the California Supreme Court to file a lawsuit. It's really just an impossibility. That is the opposite, of course, for every other local agency in the state and virtually every other state agency, where members of the public who are aggrieved by a decision can simply file a lawsuit in Superior Court. It's local, it's accessible, it's inexpensive, and you can usually find a lawyer to represent you, not the case in appellate court. The last thing we learned is that while the ex-party rules have not been followed, actually there's a deeper problem. Local agencies like you, when you have ex-party contacts with people coming to you for development applications or other businesses, you are required to report those communications before you make a decision. And in fact, you'll remember, both on the Planning Commission agenda and on your City Council agenda, before development applications, we have a section that encourages all of the council members to disclose their ex-party contacts. That's not the rule at the CPUC. At the CPUC, the commissioners don't have to report any ex-party contacts. It's the private entity that has to report the ex-party contacts. So then you might ask yourself, what's the remedy if the private entity doesn't report the ex-party contacts? And the answer is, there really isn't any because, A, all of the communications are confidential, and B, even if they weren't, you can't sue them in Superior Court. So the combination of these three state laws are what we believe we have learned from the filing of this case, and those are three of the laws that we believe need to be reformed that have come to our attention. So what happened as a result of the city's lawsuit and then PG&E's disclosures is we had seven high-ranking officials of the company and the CPUC we either let go or not appointed, and of course, as you know, one additional commissioner was recused from participating in the San Bruno decision. We also have ongoing criminal investigations of both PG&E, the corporation, and a number of individuals. So those proceedings are going forward, and we'll have to wait and see what happens. So I think it's safe to say that the city's case and the City Council's courage in taking a perhaps risky, perhaps unpopular decision to go ahead and sue another public agency, which is an unusual thing to do, really was the catalyst for all of the many things that have occurred and the revelations that have opened up since then and have exposed the fact that it's state law that needs to be changed in order to truly reform the Public Utilities Commission. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to Connie so she can conclude the presentation.
Great. Thank you. As we've identified, a number of important accomplishments have occurred, and among them is a change of leadership at the California Public Utilities Commissioner, at the commission. Commissioner Picker, who has recently been appointed president of the commission, has said a lot of the right things. And I would like to be optimistic that the commission is headed in a new direction, that in fact, the change of leadership and the revelations that have occurred particularly over the last several months have in fact made a difference, not only in public opinion but in actual tangible reform at the California Public Utilities Commission. Commissioner Picker, President Picker, has committed to a new commission code of conduct. Under his leadership, the commission recently ordered the release of the 65,000 emails, as the City Attorney reported just a moment ago. And the commission has begun to acknowledge inappropriate, illegal access and relationship with utilities regulated under their jurisdiction. Commitment to change is a good thing. It's a great start. It's not the same thing as actual, tangible, sustainable change. That's what's necessary, and that's what this initiative is really all about. I've been approached a number of times, where people have said, "Well, you have devoted, you, the city of San Bruno, has devoted a tremendous amount of time, effort, and resource to this, to the various actions and initiatives that you've undertaken, and something is really happening now. See, numbers of people are gone, people are saying the right thing, you've done it. Isn't that what you were looking for?" And again, I would say, yes, it's a great start, and it takes time to assure that the tangible reform actually takes hold and that the change that is sorely needed to protect the safety of citizens of this state actually take hold. So we can be proud. Numbers of important initiatives have borne fruit. They've been completed, and they've made a difference. Without attempting to signal what we haven't done in favor of, or as a priority over what we have done, I would jump to the bottom of this list and say that there is still a fair amount of work to do by us, by others, to assure that the penalty actually results in a safer system, good progress, result not yet achieved, and importantly, reform of a broken system, a broken system of utility operation and a broken system of utility regulation. Our initiatives have resulted in a conclusion, among others, that actual change will require legislative action and initiative. That, again, is appearing to take hold. Our legislator, Jerry Hill, in particular, now a state senator, has been singularly active and aggressive in forwarding legislation. Numbers of other legislators have begun to take notice and to take action that we hope will actually begin to change the rules by which the CPUC operates and strengthen the effect of the regulatory environment. Lastly, I'd like to just acknowledge the recognition that the city has received. I think it's very fair to say, and this is just some among many acknowledgements that the city has received or that have been openly discussed, I think it's fair to say, had it not been for the city's initiative to take that difficult action to sue the Public Utilities Commission, many of the pieces of information that belong in this puzzle would still be undercover. We would not have documented tangible proof of the finding. We would not have documented tangible proof of the finding that the NTSB made three and a half years ago, that a too cozy relationship between the regulator and the regulated exists, and that that was a clear and tangible cause of the explosion that occurred here in San Bruno. So while the city has been acknowledged, I think you should take personal credit for this as well, on behalf of the leadership of the community of San Bruno, in recognizing that preventing tragedy or doing everything that we can to prevent tragedy from happening elsewhere is a critical piece of this community's healing, a piece in security that no amount of restitution funds can buy or secure for the citizens of San Bruno who have been so irreparably damaged. Before I close, I'd just like to introduce and acknowledge the work of three people, there was, oh, four people, I'm sorry, I was wondering where you were, four people who are in the audience. Steve Myers of Myers-Navey Law Firm, Craig Betancourt of Preger Associates, a strategic advisor, Britt Strothman of the Myers-Navey Law Firm, and Alex Doniak, sitting next to me, of Singer Associates. This team has done a phenomenal job in carrying out the policy guidance that this city council provided to us. You know, I appreciate not only your leadership but the tangible work effort of this group in achieving the results that we're proud to report to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Connie?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say, four and a half years and sitting up here with this team, and Mr. Mayor, you have been uncanny and almost perfect in how we should have acted. I can't think of any other better ways, but proud of how you've represented the city and how you've dealt with not only running a city but also this unusual and catastrophic event. And you've said, and it's always stuck in my mind, every single time you've said that you will not, "We're doing this so that it will never happen again." And that's easy to say, but we're not there yet. And I'm proud to say that this is, you know, we're getting there, but there's still, based on that one email saying that there is a pipe right underneath the president's, the CPUC's president's house that they didn't know about, we're not sure about anything a lot. We're sure about what's going on in this town, but I think it is still somewhat of a responsibility that San Bruno stands in front and makes sure that it doesn't happen again, and that makes sure that those communities know how to prevent it. So, thank you.
Good. Anyone else? I just want to say that what I've been trying to say in all of these press conferences, and sometimes you get away from what this is really all about, is you bring it back to that evening when eight people lost their lives. And that's what this is all about. And I've said before, you know, in San Bruno, we have eight angels on our shoulders and a lot of other people, and you saw it tonight on the presentation, have eight lives in their conscience. We're finding out a lot of those people don't have much of a conscience, but we're trying to make it different, so we owe it to them, we owe it to the families that lost their homes and the people that are traumatized. So we have a little ways to go, but we're going to keep doing it. We're not going to let it go. Thank you.